November 19, 2008. Planning and zoning commission meeting. And would you join the commission in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all commission members are present with the exception of the chair, who is still on vacation and will be returning in December. And the minutes have been distributed to commission members. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the October 29 meeting? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of planning and zoning.
I make a motion. We approve the special meet-- the minutes of the special meeting held on October 29, 2008.
Commissioner Miller made the motion.
I'll second.
And Commissioner Loretano second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries 6-0. This is the point for public comments. And if you would like to discuss an item on the agenda, would you please fill out one of the cards? I do not have one right in front of me, but if you would like to discuss an item, ask that you fill out a public speaking card and present that to the commission secretary. And I'll move on to the next item of business, which is disclosure of ex parte communications. Are there any, Mr.?
Yes.
Yes.
Several weeks ago, I met with Ms. Heidi Kimsey and the representative from Circle K, I believe it was, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his name.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any other ex parte communications? I have none. Let's move on then to the next item on the agenda. That is the Parks Master Plan update for review and discussion. Jennifer Campbell, Parks and Recreation Superintendent, will make the presentation. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson and commissioners. Thank you for having us tonight. I am Jennifer Campbell, the Parks and Recreation Superintendent with the City of Goodyear. Tonight, we would like to present to you the Parks Master Plan update. This is a process that started back in September of 2006. And through a little over two years or so of work, we have completed draft that we would like to present to you tonight. The person doing the presentation is from the consulting firm that we hired to do that, which was Logan Simpson Design. I would like to present Jackie Keller, the project manager.
Thank you.
As Jennifer said, we had started this process in September of 2006. And one of the first questions we may ask ourselves is, why do we do an update? And the original Parks and Recreation Master Plan was done in 2001. This is an update to that, as well as looking at the 2003 general plan and the recreation element for what the criteria was set in that. Many of the things that we look at and what we have to provide in the master plan for park and recreation is kind of directed by the growing smarter legislation for Arizona. We look at what the forecasted needs are for the community and what is existing as far as the inventory that you have now in existing parks and recreation. The whole goal of this is to identify a comprehensive system for public parks, park areas, park sites, identify general locations where those are needed for service levels, and what the proposed development would be for those. And the intent of that in the growing smarter legislation is so that communities, when they get to a certain population or when they have funding available, is to look at where, so you know where to put a recreation area, and what to develop in that recreation to meet the needs of the citizens. It's also meant to help and assist the city when they move forward in developing capital improvement programs. We had a nine-step process in the master planning. And we started with the public input, had two public meetings. We had two focus group meetings, which included a variety of stakeholders from user groups, landowners, and agencies. We also administered a recreation needs assessment community-wide, and some in this room may have gotten one. Or actually, it was administered through the Internet, the website. And I'll go a little bit more into detail on what we learned out of that. We also used a benchmark survey, where we benchmarked against seven cities to identify what kind of recreation systems they had. And through all that input from the community, the needs assessment, and the benchmark survey, we developed tailored standards for what the city would need to meet the citizens' needs that we learned through the process. We developed conceptual plan alternatives, presented those at stakeholder focus group meeting, and a preliminary master plan, which we presented at a public meeting. Today, what we'll be presenting is the draft final master plan. As I had mentioned, we had two public meetings, the recreational needs assessment. These four items is really what helps us identify what types of standards you should have, not only for park acreages and what types of park categories you should have, but also the types of facilities and how many facilities. The current general plan park standards identifies mini parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, and large urban parks sports complex. It also identifies the desirable acres or the size for each one of those types. The radius is the service area, meaning that they serve the population within that area. So if it's a three-mile radius, it's a-- that's the area that it serves. And then the park acres per thousand population as a standard. The scope of this study was to specifically look at the community park and large urban parks sports complex standards, and to also see what the deficiencies are in those categories, if any, and identify if they should be modified. So what you have in the community parks and large urban parks sports complex right now as a standard is the 7.09 acres that you see for those two categories. The overall is 10.26. In our public input through our public meetings, we wanted to find out what they felt the needs were, what they valued about living here in the City of Goodyear, as well as the parks that you have here in the city. And you can read through some of the bullet points there of what they said. Some of the things that we kept hearing over and over was that they wanted to have areas that the community could gather to provide that quality of life where people can come together. Close proximity to home was repeatedly brought up because they have to drive a long distance to get to some of the recreational facilities that they have. They wanted fields, trails, sidewalks, and pathways, as well as the lighting for the fields, as well as pathways, restaurants, drinking fountains, the amenities that everybody wants to see in parks. But they also brought up that parks should be the image of the community. When people think of Goodyear, if they want to move here, they should have an image of what that quality of life is in their leisure time and their recreational activities. And the public was also very vocal about economics for the potential of parks. We asked them what they thought the issues were with the existing parks that they have or they do not have: safety, not enough lighting, lack of pathways, lack of connectivity. So many of the issues related to the fact that there just isn't enough facilities right now. They also identified some of the indoor facilities that don't exist, that they go to neighboring cities or other vendors for those. They also talked about some of the issues and conflicts because what parks you do have is minimal, so that everybody has to fight over them as far as the users within those parks. The desires and needs that they wanted was obviously more fields. We hear that all across the valley. There's not enough fields. There's not enough places to have tournament play, league play, recreation facilities for all age groups, particularly kids. They wanted to be able to travel from park to park by pathways and trails, have convenient access to parks, and sufficient parking. In many, many areas that they were recreating in, there wasn't sufficient parking for the types of activities that they were going there for. Larger community centers, mostly relating to the Loma Linda Center that you have. They feel that they really need a larger center that many of the other cities here in the valley have. Areas for non-organized sports. That is something that we're starting to hear more of a trend of, that there's not enough area for people to just go and play or practice rather than just being able to sign up for a field. So they wanted an area where they can just go without having to sign up for it. And then the dog park was new at the time we started this project, and so those comments came up, that it was great to have a dog park, and they needed some improvements at that. The recreational needs assessment was a great success. Rarely do we see a 17% response rate. Usually, it's down around eight, nine, or 10%. And what that meant is that we had a really good response that gave us a 95% level of confidence with only a 3% margin of error, meaning that if we were to administer this survey 100 times, 93% to 98% of the time, we would get the same results. So that was a very good reading of what the public wanted. Some of the survey responses I wanted to go over, just to give you an idea of what we were seeing. Most important goals for the community, as you can see the percentages written behind each one, that's the percent of the respondents who thought that that was an important goal. Preserve the natural environment and open space. Activities for adolescents and teens shows up many times throughout our questions. Multi-use paths and trails, the same. Outdoor park space for special events and passive activities, and promoting participation in organized sports. Now, we asked several questions in this needs assessment, and these are the five goals that kind of repeat through each of these questions. We asked them what facilities they most desired: indoor recreation facilities, Ramada facilities, open space, multi-use paths, and multipurpose sports complex. So you'll see the paths, sports complex, indoor facilities pretty regularly through these. It is important for us to understand why they don't use the City of Goodyear Parks and Facilities today. And so you can see that the location of the facilities programs are not close to home. They don't offer programs in interest. They don't know the locations of facilities. And generally, those two comments really relate to the fact that you just don't have those facilities to offer. They use facilities provided by other organizations. So you can see that 30% of your citizens are using facilities somewhere else, some other city, some other provider. And so that is something that we want to be able to address in this master plan. The program is most participated in by family members, again, athletic leagues, special events, swimming, cultural and arts programs, youth teen programs, special interest classes. Those last three generally relate to having an indoor facility where you can run those kind of programs. How respondents would allocate city resources. When we talk to the public and we ask people the questions, we need to make sure that they understand that there is limited funding available. So we want them to try and help us prioritize what's most important. And so they said that developing new walking and bike paths is important, purchasing land to preserve open space, fix up and repair existing park facilities, develop a multi-generational recreation center, indoor exercise facilities, and purchase land to develop athletic fields. Now, these are the kind of responses we're seeing on many of our needs assessment surveys across the state. We also talked to our focus group. They were pretty vocal in discussing what they wanted and needed for their user groups and their constituents. And we talked about the number of facilities, how many fields, how many courts, what are the special types of recreation like dog parks and skate parks that are more of a trend today. And we came to the understanding that they felt that the community parks that you have now are too small to fit all these different types of activities in. And so that an 80 to 100-acre park should be the minimum size, since we have to fit all these different user groups without having a lot of conflicts among these user groups in the same space. They also felt that the parks should serve the public as an economic tool, bringing in tournaments, bringing in special events. Developing sites differently meant that they would like to have parks that focus on something. So one park may have a soccer focus, another park may have a little league focus, and that they would be more single-use fields in that aspect rather than multi-use, so that they felt that they would be more guaranteed that be able to have fields that they could play on if it was not a multi-use, and it would be having different groups needing that demand. They also felt that the programming and the facilities and the concerns that they had when they looked at the benchmark results is that the benchmark standard should be the very minimum. They wanted to have a park system that they felt was the best. They wanted the best here in the valley, as well as the state. And I think that that kind of went through the idea that they wanted to be able to bring in some state, regional, and national types of special activities and tournaments. They also knew that it's important when we move forward to implementing a plan like this, that we have to develop partnerships to make sure that we can achieve and get the types of facilities the community wanted: partnerships with the Bureau of Land Management, the county, Maricopa County Parks, excuse me, and the school districts. They also did bring up, though, that while IGAs, intergovernmental agreements with partners are good, there are some issues that do need to be addressed as far as usage and conflicts of those facilities. The community benchmark survey was sent out to 10 cities: Chandler, Mesa, Peoria, Tucson, Glendale, Bend, Oregon, and Scottsdale all answered the survey. We also sent it to three other cities that did not respond, and that was Tampa, Florida, Tempe, and Surprise. We used the benchmark survey to be able to identify what the service level is appropriate for the population that we have. And so the chart is kind of small to read, but in the packet that you received, how planners use this information is identifying per population by 1,000 population, meaning if we are benchmarking against a city that is a higher population, like 200,000, we equalize those responses by how many facilities or how many acres of parks they have by taking it to a 1,000 population. It's kind of like a per capita situation. So what we found is that in the community parks, again, since that is what the study is focused on, the parks for acres per thousand population for community parks varied from one acre to almost six acres. Now, you might be wondering how and why were these cities picked as a benchmark? And for the most part, there was a broad range. There was a range of systems as far as size of their recreation system. There was a range of population. A couple of them were gold medal award winners from the National Recreation Park Association, which focuses on awarding communities that manage their park and recreation systems well. And Bend, Oregon, and Tucson were one of those, and you can see by their acres of 4 and 5.75 that they are higher because of that ranking. When we talked about that with the public and the focus groups, they said, yeah, that's where we want to be. We want to be up at that level. We looked at what that benchmark average was for community parks, and the average is 2.2 acres per thousand. Goodyear is currently at a 1.06 acres per thousand. So you see that there is a deficit just by the benchmark, when the focus groups and the stakeholders are saying, well, we should be at a minimum at the benchmark. We also looked at the average acres per park. And you'll see that the community park size, the benchmark size, is 43 acres. And so today, that kind of reflects what we're hearing, is that the community parks today that are 20, 25, 30 acres are not quite big enough because we're trying to fit so many people into them. We also did an extensive inventory and evaluation of all your existing parks. This is not meant for you to be able to read what's in it, but to actually look at the dot pattern. And what we do is a matrix that identifies and ranks the conditions of different types of facilities within your existing parks. And as you see the area in the middle that has hardly any circles or dots in it, those are all the different types of facilities that you normally find in community parks. So that shows us, just as a quick picture, that the real-- that you are-- the city is lacking in community-type facilities. The areas where you see all the dots, those are types of amenities that you generally find in neighborhood parks. So the neighborhood parks are well-established, and they have the types of amenities that they should. So this kind of reflects, again, in many different ways, what we're seeing. We heard from the public, there wasn't enough of community-type facilities. We saw in the benchmark survey that there is a deficiency meeting the community park acreage. And we see by evaluating your existing parkland that there are no, or there are a not-- there are not enough community-type facilities. So we started to develop the tailored standards that I talk about in the beginning for community parks, and if you remember, the large urban sports complex. And through this process, we identified that to take that standard, if you remember, it's about 7.9 acres that were in those two categories, that's in the 2003 general plan, is that it would be better defined if we were able to identify two different levels of community parks and identify regional parks and what those standards should be. And we identified that for a Level 1 community park, those would be larger, one-stop, kind of one-stop shops, where you can take your family, all your age groups, and have all the facilities in those. And those would need to be between 50 and 100 acres in order to be able to provide those types of facilities. We would also have a larger service radius at three miles versus the Level 2 community parks, which would be 40 to 50 acres and only a two-mile service area. And we'll show you in a little bit how those fit together. So because Level 1 community parks are larger parks, we assigned a 2.64 acres per thousand population for those and a 1.36, that the total for community parks would be four acres per thousand population. The remainder of that 7.09 acres that's currently in the general plan would be regional parks at a 3.09 acres per thousand. What that means is that we take those, that criteria, and we identify per population. Now, the 2020 needs were based on a population provided by Maricopa Association of Governments. This is a population based on what they felt at that time in 2006 that Goodyear would reach by 2020. The important thing to remember is that we're not saying that this is the amount of acreage or the number of parks that the city would need with the standard at 2020. The important thing is we're saying is that this is what they would need at a population of 162,000. The master plan is focused on the build-out population. The build-out population would be 389,500, provided by the City of Goodyear. And what that is saying, though, is that that does not include any area south of Patterson Road. This is-- the study area is Patterson Road north. So what that means is that for the build-out population for community-level parks, Level 1 parks, we would need approximately 10 parks, and for Level 2, we would need nine. Now, how that breaks out for your city is that we've also identified where that population growth is going to occur. We've identified three different areas of growth: the area north of I-10, being a build-out population of 45,800, meaning that we would need at the four acres per thousand criteria, 183 acres of parkland. And what we are proposing in the master plan is actually 197. In the area between I-10 and the Hilo River, we are identifying 68,300 population at build-out, and the needed parkland would be 273. And what we are proposing on the master plan is 270. Same thing for the area south of the Hilo River, which is the larger area, area-wise, would be 275,400 population, needing 1,102 acres of parkland. And on the master plan, we are proposing 1,091 acres. So combined, we are meeting the four acres per thousand, which would mean 1,558 acres for build-out population for community-type facilities. What we do is look at the existing facilities. We have five of the neighborhood city-owned maintained parks, as well as three existing community parks. And we look at the gaps. You see the circles on the plan that we've identified the proposed areas for Level 1 community parks, and we've identified six of them. And most of the proposed areas for this is driven by where we believe that that land can be available, or the city has already identified some mechanism for being able to achieve some of this. We also identified proposed Level 2 parks, which are nine new ones, and they fill the gaps between the purple circles. So what we're trying to do is fill the gaps for the service area, so as the public and the stakeholders and the needs assessment said, they don't have to drive so far to get to their park and recreation facilities. I wanted to show you how that compares to a standard. We have a guideline. The standard is guideline. And while the standard says that we should have a build-out population, 10 Level 1 community parks, working and tailoring that to the city, what we feel is possible and available for partnership or acquiring or building is six of the Level 1 community parks. Likewise, with Level 2 community parks, while the standard says nine, we are proposing 12 in order to fulfill the gaps that are left between the existing park facilities and the Level 1 community parks. Now, the Level 1 community parks are meant to be the larger parks that would have larger complexes in them. They may have multiple four-plexes in them. They may have an indoor/outdoor recreation center or an aquatic center. They may have a skate park. And the Level 2 is a little bit smaller. They're meant to fill the gap for those neighborhoods in between the purple circles with smaller facilities. So if we have a community center, or a recreation center in the green ones, that would be a smaller one. It would be more like a, what, 10,000 square foot compared to a 50,000 square foot facility. So there's different levels of facilities that we would be proposing for those different types of parks. Wanted to give you an idea, we go through the same process to identify the types of recreational facilities, meaning what-- how many softball fields, how many baseball fields, how many basketball courts. We use the same information we get from the benchmark survey and identify what does that mean for these parks. Because as the growing smarter legislation is having communities identify not only where the parks are, or general location of those, but they want you to know what would be proposed and what is the proposed development for those parks. And so this is how we identify what should be in each one of those parks. This is a park program that's in your packet. It's a little easier to read, obviously, in your packet. But what it identifies is, on the left-hand side of that column, is all of the existing and proposed parks. The row at the top is all the different types of facilities. And so as you read the matrix, you're able to identify how many of what type facility goes in each one of those parks. So as you read that through in your packet, if you picked one of the parks on the left-hand side and read the row all the way across, that would tell you the program development proposed for that park. And that kind of concludes the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
What's a disc golf course? I don't play golf, so...
A disc golf course is a-- the frisbee, frisbee golf course. Have you seen their, their light metal chain baskets on a post that they put into-- mostly here in the valley, they're out in natural areas, and they try to throw the frisbee into the basket.
Oh, okay, so it's not like golf?
No.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know what that was. Sounds fun.
Okay.
It is one of the trends that we're seeing on many communities that people are asking for, and it's becoming more competitive. It's a competitive sport.
Sorry, a little behind the times.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kraus, we're just receiving this as a report, the next steps to go to the city council. the city council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, no actions recommended at this time. This is just for review and discussion at this point, and then it's going to a council work session in December, I believe.
All right. Good. Thank you very much. Then, let's move on to consent agenda, and we have one item on the consent agenda, and that is Case 08350007, Montessori in the Park School. And the staff recommendation is to acknowledge receipt of the letter from the manager of Devco West LLC withdrawing the application. And I would entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, removing the item as requested.
All right. Commissioner Floritano and Commissioner Williams seconded that. Oh, Mr. Laux, I'm sorry. Commissioner Laux seconded that, and all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, 6-0. Okay, new item, new business, Case 072000027, Goodyear Palms Plaza Planned Area Development. And the next three items are related to this, and Mr. Merningham will present all four, I guess, at this time, and we will take action on them separately. And so, I will open the public hearing on Case 072000027. And Brad, go ahead, you're on.
Thank you, Chairman DeBrocker, members of the commission, members of the public. I will run through four cases. We've got first the final PAD, and then we will talk about the preliminary flat, and then the comprehensive sign package, and the use permit for a freeway pylon sign. So, I'll present each of the different topics, and then if there are any questions, feel free to ask at any time. Right now, I've put up an aerial photo exhibit to show where the Goodyear Palms Plaza Commercial Center is proposed to be located. It's at the southwest corner of Interstate 10 and Litchfield Road. Land uses and existing zoning surrounding the subject property include, obviously, I-10 to the north. To the south is the Palm Valley Crossing Commercial Center, which is Zone PAD. And then, to the east is the Palm Valley Crossing Commercial Center, PAD. The land use designations in that east area are automotive and related commercial and service commercial land uses. And finally, to the west, you can see that the aerial photo is a little dated, you have the Cancer Treatment Centers of America facility to the west, and there's also vacant land for office and business park uses, and those areas are zone final and preliminary PAD. Okay, moving on to the exhibit that was provided in the PAD, the site plan exhibit. And just for reference, you've got Litchfield Road right here, Fillmore Street here, so I-10, it's right here. As you can see from the colors on the exhibit, you have two hotel sites shown in green here. There are two three-story office buildings shown in brown here and here. There are a number of office buildings shown in red. And then, there are two shades of blue. There are some retail shopping areas shown in a darker blue here, some smaller pads here. And then, the lighter blue shows some of the pads adjacent to Litchfield Road. A PAD development plan was submitted with the rezone application, and the applicant has indicated that this project will be built in phases. However, it sounds like the phasing plan has been revised, so I'll allow the applicant to go into greater detail on the phasing plan. But in regards to the vehicular access, as you can see, there are two driveways on Litchfield Road, the main driveway here, and also here. There are three driveways from Fillmore Street. The main driveway from Litchfield Road will allow for full traffic movement and access into the site. The, as you can see, the main driveway is flanked by two of the small retail residential development paths adjacent to Litchfield Road, and there is also a landscaped median. As the main driveway continues into the site, you can see that it connects to a secondary internal drive aisles, which extend to the parking areas, and there are decorative traffic circles. And at that point, the traffic can turn either east or west, excuse me, either north or south, or continue west to the Hotel A. And you can see there are decorative pavings proposed at the primary and some of the secondary entrances in the site to clearly identify the circulation network. I want to show you some of the building elevations that are being proposed and associated with this PAD. Just run through four real quickly. So, this is the retail shops elevations. So, you can see in these elevations, stucco materials are being proposed, there's split-faced CMU that's, that would be painted, painted stucco. There's also decorative steel and windows, glass material in most of the elevations. Continuing on to typical shops building, this is Shops G. And now, some of the office buildings. You can see a lot of windows being proposed, but the remaining elements match the previous elevation that I've shown. And the final building elevation, I'm going to show you, the office condos. Okay, back to the site plan. As I mentioned, that there are two hotels proposed at the northwest portion of the site. The larger hotel is designated as Hotel A. And Hotel A is proposed to include approximately 100 to 200 rooms, and it may be constructed, this application is proposing that it may be constructed up to seven stories or 110 feet in height. And as you can see, the parking would be all around that hotel. The site, the other hotel site, Hotel B in the corner, is closer to I-10. It's planned to include 80 to 120 rooms, and it would be four stories or 56 feet in height. The specific hotel users are not identified at this time. You'll note that there weren't conceptual architectural elevations for the hotels. The PAD includes text that states that the future hotel building architectures, the colors, the features will be consistent with the elevations that were provided here. So, the same design quality, the same four-sided architecture will be required. So, the hotels will be developed as independent projects, however, their architecture will be required to complement what is included in this PAD. And I mentioned that the Hotel A is proposed to be seven stories or 110 feet in height. We had to contact the Phoenix Goodyear Airport due to the proximity of this site to the airport, and we included a letter from the City of Phoenix Aviation Department in the staff report. They reviewed the proposal, and they have no objections to this height. They do want, when construction occurs, for the applicant to fill out the appropriate applications notifying the airport of that structure being built, and we have added that stipulation in the staff report. The, as I mentioned, the proposed PAD includes the ability for the Hotel A to go seven stories or 110 feet. And also, the PAD is proposing that general commercial land uses can be utilized throughout this PAD. The staff has determined that the uses that are being proposed, and also the height that's being requested, are compatible with the existing and planned land uses in this region. It will not be a detriment to the surrounding properties, and the parcel size is adequate to accommodate the proposed uses in this application. The circulation provided is adequate, there's sufficient access from Litchfield and also Fillmore Street. The proposed PAD is, it is consistent with the general plan designation, and the commercial center is reasonable and appropriate at this location adjacent to I-10, and also with the existing and planned Cancer Treatment Centers for America and Airport Gateway at Goodyear Developments to the west, and also to the Palm Valley Developments to the east and south. We did have a citizen review meeting for this case. It was June 19th, and no citizens attended the meeting, and staff didn't receive any comments on this, on this case, or the, any of the cases for the Goodyear Palms Plaza. So, that concludes the comments on the PAD. If there are any questions at this point?
Yes. Commissioner Laux.
Brad, I, the main ingress and egress point off of Litchfield Road, is that going to be signaledized, is that going to be right there at Test Drive?
Yes.
And just to point out, you left off a zero on page five of your staff, third line from the bottom. You had 11 feet instead of 110.
Yeah, we'll fix that before we go to council. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Brad, you said maybe seven stories, does that mean it could be less than that?
Chairman DeBrocker, Commissioner Williams, I would defer to the applicant on that question. I think they know more about the user in mind, so I can't answer that.
I think I have to make a comment for Commissioner Gelsner and say we'd like 10 stories.
Chairman, commissioners, for the record, Heidi Short, 3003 North Central Phoenix. To answer your question, at the moment, the hotels are proposed to be four stories, both hotels would be four stories and about 56 feet. Is that correct? Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Laux. Don't go away. Don't go away. I just wanted to sort of follow up on that. Is that your guys' analysis of the market and what that would bear, or is it going to be more advantageous for a larger hotel? Because I think there are those of us who would appreciate something a little bigger than four stories.
See in the market?
Yeah, definitely market.
Come forward and identify yourself, please, for the record.
Hello, David Phillips, Mutual Development. I'm involved in this project, and we are office dot of Phoenix, 4647 North 32nd Street. We would love to have a seven-story, even higher hotel. Right now, you know, we're looking, and it's looking like most people who are interested, most of the people who are coming to us are around four stories, but we don't want to rule that out. You know, if something comes along, we can do better, we'd love to. So, but we are talking to hotels right now. Both of them are at four stories.
While you're there, are there additional questions? Okay. Yes, Mr. Williams?
And I'm not sure. And I've said, it looks like a very nice plan, you know, it's very impressive, you know, so we would like seven stories. But the other question I have is, do office buildings seem to have a lot of glass? Are they going to be green so they can be cooled efficiently?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, and that's kind of getting to the more construction side than what I'm on, but we certainly do whatever we can to keep them efficient. I know that's important to everybody right now. It's important to the tenants who are in the buildings also, because, you know, ultimately they'll be paying for the, to keep the lights on and cool and all that. So, yeah, obviously, we'll do whatever we can. As far as any kind of lead certification or anything, you know, that, I'm not sure right now.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Flot.
Is there a way to construct, if you do build a four-story hotel? I know the hospital on McDowell Road east of Litchfield, they actually added onto it years ago. It's five stories now. But is there a way, I mean, is it economical or a way to do that where you can add on to it in the future?
Just for future expansion?
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure there is. That would be the hotel operator's decision on that. Again, if they see a potential for needing that in the future, I'm sure that, you know, I can't imagine they wouldn't want to do it, but that'd be pretty substantial cost upfront for maybe not utilizing that in the future, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Floritano.
It was brought up that the phasing had changed. What is the current phasing for this project?
The phasing, the hotels will probably go first, then the, what you see in the red is the office condos. We're going to build it basically, as far as what the market bears, you know, when we're, what we can sell, what we can lease first, it's probably going to be built first. You know, we do have a phasing plan, but it's, might move a little bit just because of the market.
So, you're not looking to do the retail right away?
No.
Okay.
Have you, I've got a question on the Shops A, B, and C. Have you thought about a four-story hotel behind Shops A, B, and C? Will the hotels be visible from Litchfield Road with the A, B, and C shops?
You know, they will be visible. The hotel operators, we've talked to, we've talked to quite a few of them, you know, they're mostly interested with that visibility from the highway. That's their, that's their main, main deal, you know. And, you know, we're even concerned, well, if they're going to face, you know, the back of the building, even though you have four-sided architecture, you know, they, that was not a concern. It was that highway visibility.
Why, let me ask a question then. Why A, B, and C on a north-south rather than an east-west?
Yeah, you know, we looked at that also, when we, because it has to do with the parking. If we turn A, B, and C, I guess 90 degrees, there's, we have to push them so far towards that, this drive to allow for any kind of radius for trucks behind it, there's no parking.
Oh, I see. Okay, so it's basically to accommodate the truck parking then for A, B, and C?
Truck, truck parking, fire access, all that kind of stuff.
No other questions?
So, is the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, will the truck access to the rear of those Shops A, B, and C, will that be through this main drive, the same drive that the hotel customers, hotel clients will be using? Or will the main drive for the truck traffic be the entrance off of Fillmore Street?
Off of Fillmore.
Thank you.
No further questions?
Great.
I guess that's, yeah. Let me ask this question then, if this is still an open public hearing, are there any public comments that wish to be made regarding this item? Okay, hearing none, then. Brad, I'm going to ask your advice here. Are we at the point where... Are we at the point where we should consider a motion for this item only? This would be the rezone of, and the final planned area development?
Commissioner DeBrocker, members of the commission, if you'd like, I can make the presentation on the other three cases, and then the applicant does have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation that they would like to run through quickly.
Okay.
Before you, before you make any motions.
Okay, let's proceed then, and we'll come back after the PowerPoint presentation and take action on each individual item. So I'll continue the public hearing then.
Okay, moving on to the preliminary plat exhibit. The applicant has submitted a preliminary plat for this commercial center, which would subdivide this commercial area into 43 acres into 14 commercial lots. And the proposed plat design, it does provide for the orderly development of the area, and the plat contains adequate provision for the extension of the construction of necessary facilities to serve this development. The plat is in compliance with the standards and the policies of the city's zoning ordinance and the design guidelines. And that is all the comments I have on the preliminary plat. If there are any questions on the preliminary plat, we can address those at this point.
Questions on the preliminary plat. Hearing none. Then do you wish to go to the PowerPoint presentation at this point? Or do we wish to go to the comprehensive, the pylon sign and the comprehensive sign package? Okay, let's proceed to pylon sign.
Commissioner DeBrocker, members of the commission, I'd like to talk about the comprehensive sign package for a few moments. I've put up a sign hierarchy exhibit. This exhibit shows where all the freestanding signs are in the center. And the applicant is requesting approval of a comprehensive sign package. The sign package does include some deviations from the city's zoning ordinance. And the applicant is proposing to have two main project identification signs. They're just the standard project ID signs at the two corners of the development on Litchfield Road. They are proposing, as was mentioned, one freeway pylon sign. The freeway pylon sign is proposed to be here, where this number two is. They're also, well, staying on the freeway pylon sign, that sign will identify the project. It will list the two hotels, and it will list shops A, B, and C. And that sign would be restricted to that. Moving on to the mid-sized tenant monument signs, and essentially, these are monument signs for the office buildings, because the office buildings don't have direct frontage on Litchfield and Fillmore. And they are shown number three. So there's two of them on Litchfield Road, two of them on Fillmore Street. So they're designed to identify the office tenants. And the next exhibit will show you how tall each of these signs are. These signs are eight feet in height. The next one, you see number seven, they are requesting two larger monument signs. They're calling them multi-tenant tower signs, and they were designed to identify the shop tenants and also the projects. They're designed to identify the tenants to Litchfield Road traffic and also to serve as a pedestrian shelter and seating area. The applicant is requesting additional height. Both of these signs are proposed to be 24 feet in height. And in addition to the freestanding monument signage, they're requesting some relatively minor changes for the wall signage. Essentially, they're asking for a little bit more wall signage for all, all of the exterior building elevations, very similar to the adjacent commercial comprehensive sign packages that you've seen in the area. For example, on most of the building types, the zoning ordinance requires, it allows you to have, for each one foot of frontage, you can have one square feet of signage. And the applicant would propose to have, for the buildings, for each one foot of frontage, to have one and a half square feet for all the building elevations. So they are asking for a little bit more wall signage for each of the buildings. Okay, so this exhibit shows what each of the monument signs look like. You can see the freeway sign is proposed to be 70 feet in height. The mid-sized monument signs are proposed to be eight feet. There's four of those. Here is the, there are two of these project ID signs here. And then finally, the multi-tenant tower sign, which you see here. Two of them are proposed at the main entrance, 24 feet in height. Although there are deviations proposed from the sign provisions of the zoning ordinance, staff does support the deviations that are being proposed. Staff finds that the signage requested is generally in conformance with signage that's been recently approved for similar developments in the area, for similar other commercial centers. The proposed signs do have a unified design theme and quality and character that is appropriate for the site. So that concludes my comments on the comprehensive sign package.
Brett, could you put back the exhibit with number two, the pylon sign? Now, there's another pylon that was approved at the last meeting, which was for the Cancer Treatment Center, which is just west of the railroad tracks. Is that correct?
That's right. Let me move to a different exhibit for you. This exhibit shows the freeway pylon signs on Interstate 10, and the subject property is this square right here. This is P A D. So yes, as you can see, the adjacent, there is an adjacent existing sign here, which is the Palm Valley Crossing, the Autoplex sign. And then at the council meeting on Monday night, there were three signs that were included in a sign package for the, the P A D to the west. And you can see those, this exhibit has been updated, so there are those three shown there. The proposed freeway sign would be approximately 1,150 feet from the Goodyear Autoplex Development Sign, and it would be approximately 1,000 feet away from the sign to the west for the Cancer Treatment Center. So the cancer treatment sign would be right there. It would be 1,000 feet away. So although the proposed sign for the Goodyear Palms Plaza is not in compliance with the minimum separation distance of one-half mile, which is 2,640 feet along the south side of Interstate 10, staff has, staff finds that the applicant has submitted an acceptable level of conformance with the freeway pylon sign design guidelines to request, or, excuse me, to warrant approval of this request. However, staff has placed a stipulation in your staff report. Staff has found that there, there is justification for the proposed freeway pylon sign only if the two hotels, which are the significant regional commercial uses proposed in this center, are actually developed on the property. And so staff has placed a stipulation, recommended that any approval of the use permit for a freeway sign is conditioned upon the development of the two hotels, in addition to the other stipulations that are provided.
All right. Any questions of staff on the comprehensive sign and pylon sign? None? Mr. Williams?
Just to comment, you know, some of us struggle with signs from time to time. And just to comment, that these look very well-designed, you know, and I do like, you know, when you first mentioned the 24-foot on the multi-tenant tower signs, a flag went up, but, you know, the pictures and the benches and the pedestrian, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, do look like they're very, very well-done. And also, in all the pictures, it looks like they're all very well landscaped. And I guess I just would hope that the signs will turn out to look as nice as they do, and they are landscaped as well as it is represented in the pictures.
Any further questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Sloss.
You mentioned the city council. What was the outcome with those other three pylon signs from E J M?
Chairman DeBrocker, Commissioner Sloss, I would defer that question to Harvey to explain the final outcome of the three signs, because it was, it was a little complicated.
Am I wrong, my question?
Let's see, that was Monday night, and there was approval for all three signs, one for the Cancer Treatment Center, and then two additional signs for retail and office for the remainder of that property. The property encompasses, the Cancer Treatment Center encompasses 25 acres, and the remainder parcel is about 197 acres. The, of the two airport, it's called Airport Gateway at Goodyear, I think, is the name of the development. The two freeway pylon signs, they get one by right, and has six panels. And the second one is conditioned on three things, I don't know, really, four things. They have to either attract a large employer, meaning more than 400 employees, or a large retail user with taxable sales of 30 million or more annually, or a national hotel chain. And they also have to, the fourth one condition would be of the ones, the freeway and pylon sign they get by right, they have to have three of the six panels filled, have committed for other users before they can get the second freeway pylon sign. And that would be an administrative approval, wouldn't go back to the, to the planning commission or city council. The developer felt like in this market, they needed as much flexibility as possible to have the right to build a second freeway pylon sign if they were able to attract these, one of these three types of users. Is that clear?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we are at the point where, is this where the applicant wishes to present a PowerPoint presentation? All right, let's proceed then with that, and then we will begin to take action. We'll close the public hearing, but that's in the future. And, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I promised to be brief. Brett gave a very thorough presentation, so I'm going to focus on specific elements in the site and our, the immediate development plans. But before I begin there, there we go. I would like to note that we've worked with staff a very long time on this project to make sure the project meets the client's needs and meets all of the city's concerns. And the site has been designed to serve, of course, the city of Goodyear, and specifically C T C A and our spring training facilities. Immediate, as Dave Phillips noted, the immediate construction items would be the two hotels and Office F. I can tell you that if I'd been before you months ago, that phasing plan would have been different, but the market changes literally every day, so we are actually thrilled that the two hotels would be the first ones to be out of the ground.
So are we. So are we. Thank you.
And just to refresh your memories, the two hotels are the green buildings, and then Office F is that, the red building that is located apart from the others, so directly across from shops A, B, C. Office F is a condo office project, and we suspect that it's going to be, and we already know, it's going to be very attractive to the doctors at the C T C A. So it's a single level, which is good for patients. Doctors tend to like office condos, and so we expect to, not only will the hotels service C T C A, but also the office condos will. And then, I'll just quickly flip through these renderings. This is a rendering of the office condos. And unfortunately, you can't see the courtyard that's built inside each of the office condos, but you can see that on your site plan. And those, again, are the same elevations. I'll flip through that quickly, since Brett showed you those. The hotels would be constructed nearly simultaneously, if not simultaneously. Drawings would be started as soon as we get city council approvals. And then, to discuss the freeway signage, which I know can be a hot button, it's, it's key to hotels to have freeway signage. The motorists aren't familiar with the city, so they need help, they need guidance as they're traveling down the highway. They're scanning the freeway, and we want our project, our hotels, to be included in that scan. We want them to know, Goodyear has very quality hotels, and they're right here, they're convenient, they're near the spring training facilities, the C T C A. And so that visibility is critical to hotels, obviously, because you're dealing with out-of-towners who are driving on the freeway and have to watch all the truck drivers and other crazies out there. The hotel signs, as you noted, are going to have the same architectural elements that are exhibited in the rest of the project, so we really tried to incorporate the signage into the architectural elements of the project, so they don't stick out too much. And, of course, the signings will include the two hotels, which is key, and then shops A, B, and C. And once again, that's the elevations of the signs, and I'll flip through that quickly, because Brett showed them to you. And then, just before I close, I would like to note that we spent a lot of time on the site trying to create pedestrian links, trying to make this a project that would emphasize the pedestrian and create connectivity, that they, there would be outdoor seating areas, gathering areas, courtyards, four-sided architecture, and the buildings are at a pedestrian scale. Everything's designed to encourage the pedestrian to roam about the site. And as shown on the site plan, you've got, if you look at the two brown buildings, there's a green corridor that goes between the two and sort of dead ends at the, at one of the office condos. That's a pedestrian corridor, and then the courtyards between the office condos are, also provide refuge for the pedestrians. And then, of course, the main entry drive is well-landscaped and provides sidewalks and gathering areas and whatnot. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Hearing none. Then, is there anyone else who wishes to comment? This is still an open public hearing. Hearing none, then I will close the public hearing on the four items, and let's take case 07200, 00027, Goodyear Palm Plaza, Planned Area Development Amendment. I'd entertain a motion on that.
I'm sorry, I move that we approve 0720027, as written with the attached stipulations.
I second.
And Lartano moved, and Miller seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, nay. Motion carried, 6-0. Next case is 08300, 00008, Goodyear Palm Plaza Freeway Pylon Sign Use Permit. And if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion on the pylon sign use permit. And if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion on the pylon sign use permit.
I move we approve case number 08300-00008, the Goodyear Palms Plaza Freeway Pylon Sign Use Permit with stipulations.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Slossner? And all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Yes, there are votes no. And that carries 5-1. And you wish to comment, Mr. Laux?
Well, I might as well. I continue my quixotic campaign against freeway pylon signs and wish that these projects may get together and work together, you know, three or four, to have one as opposed to, you know, now we're going to have four over about a mile or mile and a half, and I just think that's too many.
All right, okay, thank you. Then, the next item is case 08630, 00005, Goodyear Palms Plaza Comprehensive Sign Package. If there's no further discussion...
I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
It just seems like a lot of signs. Maybe it's just me, but it just seems like a lot of signs. Especially the two sevens. It just, maybe, any feedback here, guys?
I agree. There's too much sign.
It's too many signs here.
Well, you know, my, the two sevens caused me concern too, but when you look at them, they're more than just signs, they're, they're almost like pedestrian ramadas, for lack of a better word. And, you know, I, and...
With words.
And I struggle, I struggle with signs too, but these look like they're very well done, you know, and we toured that cancer treatment center this afternoon, that's an impressive building. And, you know, if you all do this right, that is going to be a very, very nice area in there. And, you know, I guess I'm going to climb onboard and put some faith in the developer and, and trust him to do it right, and I'm going to support the package.
Okay? Mr. Slossner?
I'd just like to say that I share the same concerns. Just on paper, it looks like, it appears that there's too many signs, but with the magnitude of the size of this project and with all the buildings that are scattered out, it seems to fit, to me. So, I'm going to support it as well.
Okay, I guess I'd entertain a motion on this case then.
I move we approve case 08-630-0005. I guess I should properly say I move we recommend approval to the city council of case 08630-00005, Goodyear Palms Plaza Comprehensive Sign Package with stipulations.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lortano, second. Then we're at the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
And Commissioners Laux and Miller, and I think we have the comments as to why they voted nay. And the motion did carry 4-2. All right, then the next is case 07500, 00020, Goodyear Plaza, or Palms Plaza Preliminary Platte. Is there a discussion? I'd entertain a motion then on the preliminary platte.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I move that we recommend approval of case 07-500-00020, the Goodyear Palms Plaza Preliminary Platte.
Commissioner Laux made the motion to recommend approval. A second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Miller seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, 6-0. Okay, I guess we're at the next case then, which is 08300, 00003, Walgreens Drive-Thru Pharmacy Use Permit. And, Ms. Lacklander, and I will open the public hearing and request the staff report.
Thank you, Chairman DeBrocker, members of the commission. The aerial photo you're looking at shows the location for the proposed Walgreens pharmacy site. The site is located in the Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center at the northwest corner of McDowell Road, you see here to the south, and Pebble Creek Parkway. On the site plan for the proposed Walgreens, if I can get it here, you can see, here's the conceptual site plan for the Walgreens pharmacy. This application is requesting use permit to allow convenience use for the drive-thru pharmacy. The conceptual site plan reflects how the owner intends to develop the property. You see the front of the Walgreens facing the corner, and the drive-thru located to the rear facing this other pad to the north. The site is surrounded by commercial uses. There is a subdivision planned for the area to the west, which is Palm Valley Phase 8 PAD, but the nearest residential property line would be approximately more than 500 feet away, separated by the 100-foot RID canal easement as well as an open space tract. Here you can see the conceptual elevations for the Walgreens pharmacy. The eastern elevation would be the side facing Pebble Creek Parkway, and that's here on the top. The southern elevation would have faced McDowell Road. Staff is recommending approval of the use permit, subject to the stipulations in the staff report, as the proposed use is compatible with planned uses within the area. It will not be a detriment to surrounding properties or persons. The parcel of land is adequate in size, and it will have sufficient vehicular access to McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. This concludes the staff presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Additionally, representatives for the project are present and can answer any questions as well.
Okay, any questions to staff? Yes, Ms. Lortano?
Wasn't there a car wash going in there somewhere?
Commissioner Lortano, Chairman DeBrocker, yes, there was a car wash proposed for this pad. Unfortunately, it is traded hands, and that will not be developed at this time. This is, what is being proposed now, you can see the pad was...
That's what I wondered, I'm like, does car wash serve with the traffic flow?
Correct. The pad is quite a bit larger. A minor land division has been approved for the site, so there is an additional pad here to the north.
Is the shasta pool still going in there or not anymore?
I believe the shasta pools is still planned to the west. I believe it has been delayed.
Further questions of staff?
Out of curiosity, on the west side of the building, there's two little protrusions with lanes.
Yes.
What are those? Are those trash and recycle bins?
Chairman DeBrocker, Commissioner Williams, yes, those are trash compactors. I believe that will go on the western side between the Walgreens and the proposed shasta.
Does the applicant wish to comment?
May I ask another question?
Come forward and, would you state your name?
My name is Manish Dhivari. I am with KNI Architects, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there questions of the applicant at this point? I guess, I guess you're on a roll then, huh? All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on the public hearing? I will close the public hearing and ask for commission recommendation.
I move that we approve case number, I should have a write one here, 8300003, the Walgreens Drive-Thru Pharmacy Use Permit with the stipulations as set forth.
Okay. Is there a second to Commissioner Lortano's?
Second.
Commissioner Laux, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, nay. Motion carried, 6-0. Thank you. Then, we have Cotton Flower 086300003, Cotton Flower Marketplace Comprehensive Sign Package. And Anna, you're back on, and I guess I will open the public hearing.
Thank you again, Chairman DeBrocker, members of the commission. The aerial photo you're looking at shows the location for the Cotton Flower Marketplace Commercial Center. It is located at the southwest corner of Yuma Road and Cotton Lane. PAD zoning for the Cotton Flower Development was approved in October 1999 for a mix of single-family residential and commercial uses. The master site plan and design guidelines for the Cotton Flower Marketplace Commercial Center portion of the planned area development were approved administratively this past June. Land uses surrounding the site include, to the north, there is vacant land planned for Village Square Commercial Center. To the west and south, you can see here are existing homes within the Cotton Flower Development, as well as the Avondale Moose Lodge. And to the east, as you see here in this graded area, there's 225 feet of property to be dedicated for the future Loop 303 right-of-way. You see Cotton Lane, and then there's a mobile home storage and transportation facility. Here you can see conceptual site plan for the Cotton Flower Marketplace Commercial Center, showing the signs, sign locations proposed in the comprehensive sign package. Comprehensive sign packages are required by the zoning ordinance for commercial centers with three or more businesses to ensure coordinated designs within the development. If the proposed signs differ from the ordinance standards in terms of height, number, and size, as you know, the comprehensive sign package must go through the public hearing process. This application is requesting several deviations from the ordinance, which include one project identification sign, which is located here at the northeast corner of the project. It will also have four freestanding monument signs, two on Yuma Road and two on Cotton Lane. While the zoning ordinance permits one freestanding monument sign for every 330 feet of street frontage with a maximum of two per street frontage, the zoning ordinance standards require these signs to be a maximum of eight feet in height with 48 square feet of area. The two signs on Yuma Road, you can see those here, those two signs are proposed to be a height of 12 feet. The one sign on Cotton Lane, which is to the northern end of the site, is proposed to be a height of 14 feet. And then, one sign on Cotton Lane, or I'm sorry, that is to the south, I believe this one's to the north, one sign on Cotton Lane is proposed to be a height of 18 feet. The top four feet will be, will display the name for the development, and the tenant panels will be mounted at 14 feet and below. Additionally, wall signage, I don't know if you can, this is in your packets as well, it's a little bit hard to see up there, some of the wall signage proposes also deviations from the zoning ordinance. And you can see here, with the proposed wall signage, the red is where no walls, building signs will be allowed, the backs of the buildings facing the development. The blue is available wall signage, and the green is non-illuminated wall signage. The comprehensive sign package proposes different wall sign square footage is based on the tenant type, and you can see that chart in your booklets. Major A, which is a proposed LA fitness, would increase the amount of building signage allowed in the zoning ordinance, an additional half-square foot per linear foot on all sides, with a maximum area of 400 square feet. Pad B, located at the corner, which is a proposed CVS pharmacy, would slightly increase the wall signage and aggregate area permitted. And all other pads will have wall signage that will be in line with the zoning ordinance standards. Staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive sign package, subject to stipulations in the staff report, as it provides a unified, unified design theme, quality and character appropriate with the planned area development. And while the deviations may be substantial in some regards as to height, the type of location for the site warrants unique sign design criteria, as it is located next to the 225 feet designated for the future Loop 303 right-of-way. And the requested signage is also generally consistent with signage approved for other similar commercial developments. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Additionally, representatives with the project are available to answer questions as well.
Okay, questions to staff? Commissioner Williams?
Anna, what is on the northeast corner of Cotton Lane and Yuma Road?
It's a little, it's a...
Catty corner across this...
That is where the super target is currently. The aerial photo I showed you was very dated, but to the northeast of the project is where the super target and that development is. I believe it's Canyon Trails Town Center. Just a little update.
Does, do these, and I, this is maybe an unfair question, but do, do these signs kind of coordinate with the sign package for that property on the northeast corner?
Chairman DeBrocker, Commissioner Williams, they do not coordinate with the development on the northeast side. You know, we mainly try to keep with the character of this development. They have more of an agrarian-type theme of architecture, so they really do tend to coincide with the development in this area. They also are consistent with, this is a much smaller development, there's less signage, and the signage is shorter, is, is shorter in height.
There is less signage here, and it is smaller?
Yes.
And this, and this, the one that we're considering now is smaller? Or are you talking about the one where super target is?
No, the one where, super target is quite a bit larger. Actually, it's about seven or eight times larger in this development, and so it has quite a bit more signage. I believe it has six or more freestanding signs, six to eight, with larger signage. I believe they're 20 feet in height, all of them, and this, this development has about 100, 120,000 square feet of commercial space. So...
Okay. Further questions? Let's hear from the applicant then, if you wish to comment or take questions, or would you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Commissioner DeBrocker, Commissioners Justin Gubler with Diversified Partners and 5635 North Scottsdale Road. And just to follow up in terms of the size and the character of the signs, we really tried to focus this as more of a neighborhood-type center, and therefore, with the agrarian theme, and much scaled back from the Vestar Development across the street.
Okay, then, I guess I'll keep the public hearing open. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this public hearing on the Cotton Flower Marketplace Comprehensive Sign Package? Hearing done. I will then close the public hearing and ask for commission action. Commissioner Slossner?
I'll make a motion to approve this case, 08300007, Walgreens Drive-Thru Pharmacy Use Permit with stipulations.
I'll switch the page.
I'll switch the page. Yeah, Cotton Flower Marketplace Comprehensive Sign Package.
Okay.
Case 08630, 00003, sorry.
All right.
With stipulation.
Is there a second to Commissioner Slossner?
A second.
Commissioner Williams? Seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, 6-0.
For the record, it's past my bedtime.
We're moving.
You trying to indicate something there?
He was, he was moving your case there. Thank you. Next case then is... Next case then is open the public hearing for Walgreens Drive-Thru Pharmacy Use Permit. Mr. Williams, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you night is a request for a use permit for a Walgreens pharmacy that is located in the Village Square Market Center, which is located at Yuma Road, South Cotton Lane. Just to give you a little way around this, Canyon Trails Town Center to the east, Canyon Trails Residential Development to the north and to the west, and the future Cotton Flower Marketplace, which we've just discussed in the last development to the south there. The proposed Walgreens will be constructed, as I said, in the Village Square Marketplace on Pad C. And just to give you again a little trip around the site here. Cotton Lane here, Yuma Road. Entrances to the development will be off of, main entrance off of Cotton here, I'm sorry, Yuma Road here, which will be a signalized intersection to develop, two entrances off of 173rd Avenue and one to the north here that will access Cotton Lane. This Walgreens proposes 14,800 square feet of floor space with a drive-through access. Again, orientation, this would be Yuma Road here. This would be the main entrance into the Village Square Marketplace. This would be the front of the Walgreens with the drive-through being over here to the east of the building and would not be visible from Cotton Lane. As we said, access would be provided through the signalized intersection here at, along Yuma Road with the other entrances on 173rd and Cotton Lane. Conceptual elevations for the development are consistent with the architectural theme that is, that was approved with the Village Square. Again, I would just note that this would be the north elevation in the rear of the building, the front elevation facing Yuma Road, and this would be the drive-through that would not be visible from Yuma Road. We had a citizen review meeting regarding this on November 4th. There was no citizen participation in that meeting. Staff has received no communication and opposition to this development. It is staff's conclusion that this request satisfies the criteria established in Sections 126 and 422 of the zoning ordinance. It is compatible with surrounding land uses and will not be a detriment to surrounding properties or persons. Staff recommends approval of the use permit, subject to the stipulations contained in the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. Applicant is available for questions and I will conclude my comments.
Questions of staff? None, you're on a roll, right? Does the applicant wish to comment at this time? No, okay. Then is there anyone who wishes to comment on this particular item at this point? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and then ask for Commission recommendation.
I move that we approve, getting past my bedtime too, 08300007 with the attached stipulations.
All right, Commissioner Laura Tano made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Miller seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carried, 6-0. And the next item is the Food Market Convenience Store Use Permit. And Mr. Williams, you're on the staff presentation.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. We have before you this evening, the final case of the night, which is a request for a use permit in a C2 zoning district for a proposed food mart, which is located on Van Buren Street on the northwest corner at Pallaverty Drive. And again, just orientation around the site, the Augur Free Animal Clinic is a building immediately to the west. The Central Square Storage is located directly behind the proposed food market. This would be the Littlefield Apartment Complex. Arturo's Mexican Food directly to the west, I'm sorry, to the east. And then the Mountain View Apartments directly across the street. Now, in the zoning ordinance, a definition of a convenience use includes stores less than 7,500 square feet where groceries, reading materials, and other household goods are sold primarily for the consumption off premises hence needing approval of the use permit. Now, the proposed food market is 3,200 square feet in floor area and roughly, and will primarily sell those items that we had identified in the zoning ordinance well that you would find in a normal Circle K convenience store. Originally, this building was constructed in the, in the 1920s and functioned as, I'm sorry, 1970s. 20s are a long, I'm trying to get through in a hurry. It was constructed in the 1970s and functioned roughly for 15 to 18 years as a Circle K convenience store, which I believe in 1989 moved right down the, right down the street aways. For the next 15 years or so, I believe it might have been one other use before it became the sleep shop. But recently, the applicant purchased the building within the last six months and the sleep shop has become vacant or is no longer in this location. There have been no improvements made to the building since it was constructed in the mid 70s. As part of the use permit, the food, the applicant will be required to make certain improvements to the property, which would include, and I would just go back to the site plan. Now, I might have just a little bit better picture of current conditions out there. Yeah, I do, I'll just show you this one real quick. As you can see, it's basically just the building that's sitting there with an asphalt parking lot. Part of the improvements that the applicant is proposing are to come back in, completely redo the parking lot, stripe the 10 parking stalls, would add street-side landscaping planners and landscaping to Pallaverty Drive as well as Van Buren Street. As well as building facade improvements, perimeter fencing, screen walls in the rear, raising the parapet walls to screen the mechanical equipment in the back, security lighting, windows on the side, as well as landscaping on the, on the west side of the building. We had a citizen review with this on October 29th, 2008. The folks that own the animal clinic to the west were the two owners that showed up for this. Very productive meeting. It was the first time the two owners, the applicant of this and the owners of that building had met. Good dialogue between the two and I think they came to an agreement that both of them working together was good for that area. Two sets of eyes keeping watch on each other's property. Staff concludes that the, that the proposed use permit satisfies the criteria outlined in the zoning ordinance. It is not a detriment to property surrounding or person. Staff is recommending approval of the use permit, subject to the stipulations you have contained in your staff report. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Hamden is here and available for questions and I'll close my comments with that.
Questions of staff at this point? Thank you. Mr. Hamden, do you wish to come forward and would you identify yourself and, and your address? Or do you wish to not comment? Okay. Are there questions of the applicant?
I thought Leslie might have one.
I would just say thank you for being so patient and sitting through this whole meeting.
Okay, there are no further questions and, and there's no one that wishes to comment, I guess publicly. I will then close the public hearing and ask for Commission recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, or I propose that we recommend approval of case number 08300-00012, a use permit to allow the convenient use, the food market on this, what is it? Pallaverty Drive and Van Buren. And I wish you success.
All right.
Second.
Mr. Laux, second. And all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries, 6-0. Thank you, sir. We are at staff communications.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, two quick announcements. Our next meeting is on December 17th and we'll be in the Vinita. We'll be in the new building. It's the building directly west of our current location. And Joe is handing out maps. It's on 145th Drive. No, it's Drive, isn't it? It's Avenue? Okay, Avenue. I thought it was Drive. Anyways, it's just directly west of our building. So this probably represents our last meeting in this building. I believe this building is going to turn into a Parks and Rec Administration building, I think. The second announcement is on December 5th. I want to remind you that for those that signed up for the Boards and Commissions meeting, Karen will be escorting you there, driving you there. So I think there's four of you or five of, four or five that have signed up for that. Probably meeting Vinita and Karen will be getting back with you at the time.
Or we can drive ourselves.
Or you could drive yourself.
I probably will drive myself.
I'll drive myself.
I've driven with Karen too, so I understand. I've seen her. She recently did get her license renewed. So she'll be, all right. But she's willing to escort you there if your insurance is paid up. Okay, well, that's all I have.
What time are you leaving?
I don't know, I'll have to, you know what? That's all I have unless you have any questions.
No questions, I don't think. I guess we're ready to adjourn. Thank you. I wanted to thank you all for the patience of Joe. A motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Second.
All right, we are adjourned.